Do you hear from Councilmember Nelson?
Welcome to the special meeting of City Council, January 2nd, 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the invocation and a moment of silence. Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Covielo.
Here.
Councilmembers Carriosa.
Here.
Costin.
Here.
Gunter.
Here.
Nelson.
Stout.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Seven present, one absent.
Thank you. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? Councilmember Carriosa?
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I think the issue at hand is important enough to make sure that we have this meeting with all eight council members sitting. I know it's impossible sometimes during the holidays, as we're trying to do, but nonetheless, we should not be discussing this because we have one council member not here. She will not be informed of what was discussed or who brought up what points. I think what we need — oh, excuse me. Okay, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. And I couldn't agree more. It's one of the reasons why we waited until now because we had Councilmember Welsh away until December, I think it was 22nd or 23rd. So it's part of the reason why we waited till this time. So I couldn't say that I concur exactly with what you said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Let's proceed.
Thank you, Councilmember Carriosa. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
Have a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Carriosa.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Covielo.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Stout.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item six, citizens' input time, a maximum of 60 minutes. The set for input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. So anyone wishing to speak during citizens' input, please approach the podium.
Mayor, Council, Marty McLean. Basically on top of you guys are getting ready to embark on this afternoon, I was part of the council members that hired Mr. Zerlag. If you remember during that timeframe, we went, I went through two interim city managers, a council-placed city manager, finally in 2012, Mr. Zerlag. None of it was a pleasant walk, as most of you know, and when he took the helm in 2012, the city was in dire straits financially. I met with him, I've met Councilmember Carriosa, was on part of that team that brought Mr. Zerlag here. In the nearly eight years I've known this man, not one time have I ever, sitting on council, and if the friendship has just come forth over the past several years since leaving council, witnessed him step out of line in any way. His professionalism, his ethics, his true love for this city, and you all have copies of Bezenjers' report, what he had to say, the four pages of accomplishments. His integrity is fully intact at this point. Council made arrangements or an agreement this past November with a compensatory insert into that, starting May of this year, basically to help offset pay raises that he didn't take since 2016. So that sit, and again, he's 10 months away from going out on top, and this is a tremendous blimage on his reputation. He's got an impeccable reputation. And unless you have something criminal or something documented ethically that he's done incorrectly, I think the city may be going down the wrong road here. You all know in your own minds what you're looking at, what you're looking for. But again, it's an election year, two seats will be up, two others, it's just gonna be a very fast-paced year, and without leadership in that end of it, I think it's gonna be even a more challenging year going forward. And there are a lot of things that need to get accomplished. I've got things I'm working with Mr. Zerlag on as far as organizations. All that becomes undone if something bad, wrong goes here. So I appreciate council's time and consideration, but I ask you to look at all aspects of this, and I know you all will. You're well-studied, like I said, unless there's something here I don't know, I think we just let everything transit, the transitions take place as you all laid them out. That was a perfect way of doing this. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak during public input?
Mr. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. My name is Jimmy Williamson. I am Vice President of WB Williamson Brothers. We employ over 94 men and women from our office here in Cape Coral. Among other things, WB specializes in marine construction, particularly in seawall construction and seawall replacement. And WB is one of only a few in Lee County that offers seawall replacement via barge when there is no other access because of an existing home on the property. And as you know, hundreds of Cape Coral citizens suffered seawall damage from Hurricane Irma. And as some of you may know, many of those damaged seawalls still are not repaired or contracted to be repaired. Why? The cost to replace the walls are financially prohibitive to many owners who are on a fixed income. They were not expecting to shell out $30,000 to $50,000 to repair their seawall. To add to that, our current charge for seawall repairs is based on the premise of us being able to stage from a vacant lot that is in relatively close proximity to the job site, and that is why I'm here today. Vacant lots and the fact that the city does not own any commercial waterfront staging areas, or at least they don't provide them within the city. City staging areas like the city of Naples has, that it provides to its marine contractors. We are running out of vacant lots at an alarming speed. Without them, we cannot perform repairs to the field seawalls in our city. And let me fill you in on a little-known fact, as many walls that failed during Irma, many more are just still standing by a thread. You can take a ride down any of the canals with me, and I can show you hundreds of walls that were severely damaged by the storm but are just still standing. Rest assured, the next good tropical storm that dumps enough rain will be what breaks the camel's back, and there will be another wave of failed seawalls. And then what? How will we be able to perform the needed service? We won't, not affordably, because we will have to stage from miles away. Right now, the cost is at a minimum of $350 per foot to replace seawalls by barge, and we are the least expensive in the industry. You can safely assume that price to rise to $550 per foot should I have to stage from miles away. In a city with hundreds of miles of canals, how is it possible that there is not even one city-provided staging area? Almost three years ago, we came to the city with this concern. At that time, we were told the city would look into allowing the use of three different properties it had identified. And in an attempt to make this a cost-neutral project to the city, WB and other marine contractors offered to make the required improvements, seawalls, docks, et cetera, to the staging areas pro bono. And to help the city make money, offered to pay each time we use a staging area, but still nothing after three years. And to add to our problems, the council recently passed an ordinance requiring formal participation of the homeowner in order for us to use their vacant lots. The problem with this is the owners are often living out of state or the country and are unable to be reached by phone or email. Where does that leave us? This issue is a real problem that only contractors face, but the citizens that need seawall repairs, the city's tax base, its home values, its home sales depend on the marine construction industry to make the improvements and repairs to waterfront properties, but we are being squeezed to the point of not being able to operate. I hope that the council will take this message seriously and take the required steps to produce a result that serves everyone's interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input's now closed. Council discussion, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Marty McLean for coming in, speaking. I came on the council shortly after Mr. Zerlag came aboard, so I know exactly what he was talking about, and John walked into a mess, so. But that's history, and we'll, I'm sure, talk about that tonight. So again, thank you, Marty. As far as the seawall issue and the land, up until now, the city hasn't really been able to do much to help the residents with the seawall issue, or help anybody with the seawall issue, especially financially. This isn't something that we can take care of, that we can do, that's not gonna cost us anything, and allow them to get fired up a little bit more and get working better. So can we really make an effort to get some property? We have a lot of empty lots out there, guys. So if we can find someplace that is suitable for them and us, it would be really great if we can make that happen. Go ahead, sir.
I'll be happy to respond. Again, it's been a long process, it's a complicated matter. Staff is currently working, including Jeff Pearson, to utilize some of his property. And again, I don't know, I've got Jay Murphy at the vanguard of that, working with Jeff Pearson. Chef's out of town, I think, this week, but I'll be happy to have a report for you next week where we stand.
All right. Thank you.
I also want to chime in on this. My initiative, and I was in some of these meetings probably almost two years ago, and to me, I can see taking some time to find a staging area for these groups that need to get to the seawalls so we can help keep the cost down for the residents. It's been over two years, and I hear the frustration from Mr. Williamson and his company is trying to find places to launch their supplies and their seawalls so they can get out and do the work that needs to get done. So my question is, why is it taking so long? What's the process that needs to take place, and how do we get it fixed?
Well, again, I'll have a response in writing next week on all the questions that are asked tonight, if I can answer them myself or my staff that's here can answer them. I understand there's more than one seawall contractor. I think staff has been working with a number of them, and we'll get their input as well and their perspective in how they are operating. And again, I'm not sure at this point if it'll require a zoning change to utilize some of our property owned by utilities, but it's off the Calusa Hatchet, and we'll have a report in that regard.
My question, Mr. Zerlag, is we just sold a surplus piece of property on a canal system. Why aren't we looking at surplus properties that the city owns? I don't understand why that would be so difficult to keep a few of those in areas where they can launch some of their barges so they're closer to the residents that need the work. I don't get it.
We are looking at property the city owns from, in one of our RO plans.
Thank you. Councilmember Stout?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Williams said. Marty, I'm so glad you came to address the council because you did serve on council under a couple of different city managers. As far as, and I did read the Williamson's email, which was lengthy, but you know, it gave information that I thought was necessary, but my thought was, we had a lady that came to this council meeting every week to ask for her seawall to be fixed. It's kind of the squeaky wheel. If I had been maybe a seawall builder, I would have addressed council every week. She did, and she got her seawall fixed, so consequently, yes, the city promised something, but sometimes things don't happen in a timely manner. So consequently, coming to speak before council really does make a difference. I've seen it so many times where it does make a difference.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's go on then. Item seven, new business. I had called this special meeting. I'm gonna outline some information that took place, starting with November 18th, which was the council meeting that we were gonna discuss an amendment to the city manager's contract on that day. At about 15 minutes before that meeting, Councilmember Carriosa brought City Manager John Zerlag into my office, and he was, he had learned of some improprieties that had taken place regarding some IRS payroll taxes that had gone back. At that time, we were told up until, it was in December of 18, that FICA taxes were not paid, and that could be quite a bit of money. We didn't know the amounts at the time. We continued with the meeting that evening. We did do the amendment to the contract at that time, extending it for a small increase in pay. But after that, I started to lose confidence in the ability to interact with the city manager regarding city finances because there were a series of events that took place. And one of the things that took place was we had an audit go immediately into the finance department, the city auditor, and look at this impropriety to find out where we were at. The report came back with some timelines that every council member has. The report came back with some dollar amounts, and shortly after this, we found out that there was $402,000 worth of penalties and fines, that council was not notified. And that's where I lost the transparency feeling that information during that contract negotiation might have been withheld for that reason. And again, it's just a feeling that I had at that time regarding where this was going. Shortly after that, all of a sudden, there was other information that slowly came forward. Some of that information came forward regarding a contract employee and an investigation that was taking place from March of 19 up until that point, and tax dollars are being spent on an outside HR attorney's firm to do that investigation as well. Along the lines of that, we found out at that time that that particular contract employee had no contract, and he had no contract for over a year. Along that timeline, also that particular employee, when they had no contract, filed a workers' comp claim, which was denied, which I thought also put the city in a liable situation based on the fact that there was no contract. You're going to an insurance company, and you're filing a claim when you don't really have a contract employee status. Along with that whole situation too, I also saw that the contract employee that had no contract was paid $63,700 that year. That's well over the threshold of the city manager at that time had a threshold to authorize $50,000. But of course, he authorized 63.7 at a time where we had a contract employee with no contract. So I lost some confidence in the inconsistencies of what took place in that particular investigation. Subsequently, from that point going forward, our finance director and two lower-level employees who was in the chain of the incompetent payroll supervisor that caused the problem were put out on paid administrative leave. Along that lines, I thought that the finance director was very, very cooperative when our — say something when I'm finished. I'm gonna lay out my timeline, and I'll be happy to hear from you. Along those timelines, there was other information that was brought forward when those people were put out on leave, and I do have that information in those letters here. And I'm just laying out why I have the feelings that I have regarding the lack of inconsistency when dealing with personnel and the loss of transparency to this council in the financial aspects of what's taking place in the city. I'm not done yet, Chief. If you've got a couple of words that you want to share, I'll be happy to hear them, but I still have more information I wanted to share.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, Dave Newland, Police Chief for the record. I just want, with all due respect, I want to caution the council that some of the things that were just being said is an ongoing investigation. It's confidential, we should not be talking about it, it does compromise the investigation. The documents that you're talking about, again, that's part of an ongoing investigation, as well as other investigations that are currently ongoing right now. I would caution again to please not discuss this. We've always maintained the confidentiality to not compromise the investigation. Again, let the process work for itself, as it always has, and as always, when it's concluded, you'll have all the information. So I just want to bring it up before it gets any further.
Chief Newland, I'm gonna respectfully disagree. I have an auditor's report here that states very clearly that based on our review, there was no need for a criminal investigation at this time. So there were no funds missing based on our auditor's report in the finance department. Secondly, I question whether or not the police department, who's paid by taxpayer dollars to fight crime and enforce the law, and I question the decision to have you doing an administrative investigation. We have 16 employees that work in an HR department that are very capable of doing an administrative investigation. So I don't understand why that's brought over to the police department. On a side note, there's another investigation against the same contract employee that's being headed up by our fire chief, which I think puts him in an awkward position as well. We have an HR department, we're a large city. Most large employers have what's called a professional standards group inside their HR department who handles such investigations. So when you sit here and you caution us not to talk about it, I don't see any criminal wrongdoing. My discussion is strictly administrative in nature, and that's the direction I'd like to take this in.
If I may, I can respond, I'll respond to the first part, and I don't want to speak to the city auditor, but what they were doing is a fact-finding based on the numbers. That was their responsibility. And you're right, from thereon, we had to wait to make sure there's nothing criminal. Now, they were still wrapping up their investigation, I think, as of, I think still part of it is still ongoing, I believe. So that's not complete yet. Let me, that's why I'm cautioning as that part goes. The second part is, you're right, we are, but we are doing an administrative investigation, which is confidential. And whether or not it's criminal or not, again, that's still wait to be seen, because they're not done with theirs yet. But we are doing our administrative investigation. As far as your other question, I don't know if the, you want me to answer that, John, or you want? There are some times, based on investigations, based on the complexity of an investigation, sometimes we are tasked with doing these type of investigations. As you know, we do have a professional standards unit. We are very detailed and task-oriented on doing investigations. This investigation has a lot to it. We've been working with the city auditor since the very beginning. It's still ongoing. Again, I would just let you know that let the process work for itself. It always has in the past. I think we've always done a good job, a very detailed investigation, and you'd be provided at the very end. The documentation that you have is unsupported at this time. That's all you have. Let's finish that investigation. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Chief Newland, who do you work for?
I work for the city manager.
The investigation that you're doing is into the finance department?
Yes. One part of it, yes.
Really has separate nuances to what we're talking about, which is the performance of the city manager regarding certain things that have taken place out of the city manager's office. So it's not in conflict with what you're looking at. I know that there are improprieties in the finance department that need to be fixed, and there are things there that need to be corrected, and there are some mistakes that have been made, okay? But what I'm looking at is, you know, we're, we're looking at an entire office administration and letters from the finance director that make other improprieties that took place during that period of time. And I know that you're looking at it saying that it's hearsay, but I know that I hold our finance director in high regard and honor as far as what I've seen her done in the many years that she's been working here. She's responsible for refinancing older debt, saving the city and taxpayers millions of dollars. She's also responsible, because of her fiscal conservative nature, to make sure we have the top rating, bond rating, okay? These IRS payments that didn't get made were made, was done by a low-level employee, two levels, maybe three, below the finance director. We didn't even give her a chance to get back in to fix some of these issues because we immediately put her out on leave, okay, as soon as this broke. And it broke only because a council member approached the city manager. It wasn't the other way around. So I see that as being a lack of transparency in his approach. I'm gonna hear from Councilmember Carriosa.
Can I respond to what you just said? First of all, again, we're, I'm not questioning the subject employee. We're basing our investigation on that particular event, on what's been given to us to investigate, okay? Not talking about the past, not talking about the future, talking about the investigation, the scope of the investigation, what we're looking at. But what you're discussing, that's part of that investigation, and I would caution to be careful talking about it. Again, I've said this before, we've always maintained that same practice. I'm trying to also protect that employee as well. So I'm just recommending it's best you shouldn't talk about in detail about that investigation.
But if it's administrative in nature?
It's still confidential. You're bringing up information that, first of all, you have on a document that's unsupported, has not been verified. We have a lot of information we're putting together. Again, I will caution you, I've said this numerous times, I would not discuss this investigation. I can't stop you from talking about other things, and I'm not trying to, but I am trying to caution you. Again, it's my job to look out for liability for the city as well, and that's why I'm telling you this. It's not to bring a roadblock into today, but I'm trying to caution you before you talk about this, because it is an ongoing investigation. It's not been concluded, it's ongoing, and as soon as we get this done...
Are you telling me that we need to call a shade meeting? That only has to do with legal things.
I'm not recommending a shade meeting.
How does council have an opportunity to talk about it if we can't talk about it?
Because it's under investigation, you shouldn't talk about it. That's my recommendation.
The investigation's been going on since November 18th. It's quite some time that we've had to be able to investigate this. I would think that by now, and I remember hearing verbally that it was gonna be done by the end of the year, and then recently I heard it's gonna be done by the end of January.
Maybe that was, again, you have several different investigations, faster than this investigation, first of all. And it has not been a long time. I'm not sure you're basing that on, as far as why you think it's a long time, no disrespect. But you gotta remember, first of all, the city auditor has their part first, and a lot of information are going through, and as you can see, they're still not done yet. So again, we're still working with the city auditor on that. Meanwhile, we're doing the other part of the investigation. We're not wasting any time, but investigations like this do not go over that quick. And if they are, I want to make sure these investigations are done very accurately and detailed, and all the facts put down on documentation so it can be viewed. You don't want to rush things like this. So it has to be done accurately, as we always have in the past. And you have to trust our department, we know what we're doing. Again, I'm just trying to caution everybody, please be careful talking about it. All due respect.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with the police chief that administrative investigations in Florida are confidential until a cer, at a certain point. What I would distinguish here, Mr. Mayor, from what you have just been talking about is not whether or not council wants to analyze the, as yet incomplete, investigation that the police department and the city auditor are doing regarding the processes and some failures that may have occurred in the finance department. What I was hearing you talk about was more of a concern regarding the number of investigations, the manner in which the city manager may be choosing to conduct them and things of that kind. So in other words, those other areas are not drilling into an administrative investigation. I would recommend that you not drill into the actual details of the administration, of that particular administrative investigation. If you have other concerns, including but not limited to the one that you mentioned a moment ago about an employee communicating to council regarding what she... a moment ago about an employee communicating to council regarding what she perceived to be improprieties, that's a topic that's separate from the investigation.
Please, Chief Newlin, professional standards within side your department is really there to investigate internal investigations, it's not for external?
No, no, we do internal and external investigations. We do both.
My understanding was they would do internal department, departmental investigations on issues that are internal, not external?
Well, yes and no. Our normal practices are correct. We do normally do internal and external investigations as it relates to the Police Department. There are times, though, but we have been tasked with other investigations outside the department based on the complexity of the case. Again, it's sometimes a case-to-case basis to make sure that it's done properly, and depending on how complex it is.
Thank you.
I'd like to augment what the Chief said, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. Having been here now for almost eight years, there's been a myriad of investigations that I have, that I have authorized. And again, just to restate what the Chief indicated, sometimes the complexity is such that we don't require someone that's trained in investigative techniques like the Police Department is. They do an excellent job. They set the bar for investigations. So there's been some investigations where they've been carried out by others beside the Police Department, including the Fire Department, and there have been others that have risen to a certain level of complexity that we needed to have a certain element of knowing what the protocols are and knowing what questions to ask and how to ask them and know the follow-up questions that we find in the Police Department. And so, again, it's served us well. We have a very good record of doing complete investigations. Council is advised of investigations if I think they rise to that level. We have investigations, I've got almost 2,000 employees, that even I don't, and I'm not aware of. There's people that are fired that I'm not aware of. And I understand that as manager and with my direct reports, some of my employees are what you'd call high-profile. When it comes to an investigation, there's not a requirement for me to advise council what's going on based upon when I become aware of it. I'd like to be able to expound upon the issue at hand, on the IRS filings, but that's a matter that's currently under investigation. And as the Chief indicated, my hands are really tied in that regard in giving a response or rebuttal to what you have or may not have in that regard. Just wanted to indicate that with investigations, when they get to a certain point that I think council should be made aware of it, I would, I would do so. And again, things were not at a certain point, based on my knowledge, to articulate what I had known up to that point in time. Once the investigation is complete, I think all of your questions will be answered. Everything that you have in front of you plus more will be documented and verified. And then, I think it might be appropriate to take a look at what we did, and then you can judge on how well we had performed that service.
I'm going to respectfully disagree, because I have information on a certified letter from Ms. Bateman, and I have transcripts on an interviews from an outside HR attorney regarding an investigation that took place. And there were 14 people that were interviewed pertaining to specific issues and situations that are mentioned in that letter. So I think there is verification for some of the things that we're going to talk about today. Councilmember Karyosha?
I would implore this council to wait till the investigations are completed. And I'll tell you why. It has been suggested up here that we should allow the Finance Department to investigate themselves, yet we're concerned about the Police Department outside of the Finance Department doing an investigation, because maybe we don't feel it's appropriate, because they all work for the same City Manager. We need to wait till all the pieces of the puzzle are in place. We do not want to jeopardize the investigation. None of the Finance Department administrators or supervisors have the training or the expertise to conduct a criminal investigation. I've done this work for 35 years. I can assure you, time is on our side. They say to the end of January, let's wait. If we move forward now and it falls apart, we will lose. The taxpayers will lose. The employees will lose. There's no reason not to be patient in an investigation. They will follow the evidence. They will conduct the interviews. They will come back with a report. FDLE will not take it unless there's a criminal investigation. Did we know that? I'm telling you it's true. So let the Police Chief and his members go forward with the investigation, and we can all meet back here in public and discuss whatever we want without fear of jeopardizing or allowing those that are under investigation to know something they shouldn't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I would say that I would agree with Councilmember Karyosha. However, we've had our auditor, independently of the City Manager's office and the Finance Department, who works directly for the council and the mayor, do an investigation. And there's information in that investigation that tells us that there were certain things that took place. There's also a timeline that was given to the council regarding when certain information was shared with the City Manager and the City Manager's office, well before he notified council that there was some improprieties that took place. I'm sure, as I'm sitting here, that those IRS fines and penalties and payments will all get rectified. But what it did was it opened up a door to start looking at other things, and those other things are things that came forward that were not part of the initial investigation that Chief Newlin is doing. I have an investigative report here on a contract employee that was given a letter of counseling that was talking about, you know, creating a hostile work environment, or bullying, as we call it. And then I've got a corroboration on the Finance Director talking about things that she was asked to do along the way that were improper for her to do. And I'm going to just read a quick excerpt of that letter that came to me via certified mail. It's public record. It was certified and sent to my office. This is from the Finance Director, Vicky Bateman. "I refused to sign a memo to falsify the city's savings on outsourcing the maintenance of the golf course grounds. Mr. Zerlag wanted me to agree to tell council that the city would save five to 10 million or more over 10 years. This was false. The City Auditor, myself, and others tried explaining to the City Manager only shifts the cost from one place to another. There are no realized savings by doing so. Against the procurement ordinance and regulations, Jay Murphy reached out and discussed pricing with a friend of his who ran Fort Myers Golf Course. Mr. Zerlag and Murphy then pressured me to sign the memo to council, but I wouldn't. The proposal did not comply with our city charter, and it did not even attempt even a charade of obtaining competitive bids." So there's a lot of information in that letter that I find honorable, and I think that there was a scapegoat looked at, and there are going to be some improprieties in the Finance Department. But when you look behind the door, here's another thing here. "I refused to endorse and sign off on a request that the city create an employee health clinic. I knew that the startup cost for the clinic would be around 1.2 to 1.5 million, and council hadn't been told about this. I kept telling John, Jay, and Connie that in order for us to establish a clinic, the funds for the startup cost needed to be identified before we could request a proposal from outside contractors." So there's more to this letter than what I just read, but I think there's enough improprieties there to have a discussion about where we go from here. Councilmember Karyosha?
If I may have a response to that?
One second, please. This will not change, Mr. Mayor. All this information that we have is going to be part of the total information that we should have when the investigation is complete. I'm not here to argue he said, she said. What I am here, though, is to make sure we have all the information, and we're told we don't. It's very hard to come up with a decision or move forward on an investigation by the council without having all the parties submit information that we will need. That will change. The allegations from Ms. Bateman will not change. You'll still have it. We will still have it. We will have an opportunity to discuss and question the elements of veracity of those allegations when the time is proper. Again, I implore you, let us wait till the investigation is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zerlag?
Thank you. I don't wish to stand here and have those allegations that are false just go unwarranted, because sometimes silence is concurrence. I do not concur with anything that was in that letter. And again, it's being investigated, is all I want to say at this point in time.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in complete agreement with Councilmember Karyosha. We have snippets from different people, different issues. I've read Vicky's letter. I trust it. Most of what's in there is very honest, and she's not trying to do anything underhanded. But again, there are snippets of things that have happened. If we're going to do anything serious, we need to have a little more global outlook on this. We need to take everything and combine it, including his past record of work. I don't agree right now. I think this meeting that we're having right now is a little premature, to be honest with I believe that we need to let the Police Department continue. They do that as a profession. They understand how to handle investigations. We need somebody that's going to have to coordinate these little investigations that are going on, so. The Auditor's Office has done investigations, but they're not all asking the same questions. They're not all concentrating on the same issue, and if something comes out on the side conversation, then we don't know if that's true or not. So I would rather have the people here that are having these investigations, so we can ask questions, instead of relying on a letter, innuendos, news stories, whatever. So I agree with Councilmember Karyosha. I believe that we need to let this play out, and then we'll be in a position, a well-informed position, to make a better decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Causton?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Newlin, are the claims in Vicky Bateman's letter being investigated by your department?
Yes. Yes, there's a large part of that. Well, there's more than one letter, from my understanding, but the one letter you have, I think on page two, goes right into what we're investigating, around the mention that the mayor had already mentioned.
There are nine claims of either unethical or illegal action in her letter. So I'm not just talking about the IRS issue. I'm ready to not talk about that today. I'm fine. That's not an issue. Well, it is an issue, but I'm ready to wait.
The answer to your question, yes, these are going to become, obviously, this is part of now, this is part of our investigation. What I'm trying to reiterate, I guess, is that the fact that wasn't our original scope, because based on the document, that's now expanded the investigation as other events have taken place.
So that's news to me. I was not aware that any of these claims are being investigated. So are you telling me that you are basically investigating some claims that were made against your boss?
At this time, right now, we're focused on the original part of the investigation. That's our focus right now. As far as the claims, that's going to have to be investigated. I'm not saying I'm going to do it, but it's got to be investigated, because it's statements that are being made right now. Unfortunately, a document's been released that, I'll be honest, should have not been released. So now that's got to be looked at to support, it's an unsupported document that you're talking about.
You mean her letter to us?
You can't, it's not supported.
But is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
The letter? Okay. I agree. I think an investigation needs to take place, and I think that you could not possibly, no one in the city could possibly investigate the City Manager. So I think we do, anytime there's an allegation, I mean, this is, the culture of the city since I've been here has been, if there's an allegation, it needs to be investigated, whether we like it or not.
That is correct.
So regardless of the IRS issues, these allegations in Vicky's letter need to be investigated, and it can't be us. So it either needs to be our Auditor's Office, which is independent, or it needs to be an outside firm.
And let me just, again, say this. I don't want to speak to the Auditor, and I don't want to put the Auditor in a bad position, but they don't do administrative investigations. They're not numbers. Unless the Auditor disagrees with me, that's not, part of what we do is we look at, again, there's a process in doing an investigation, administrative investigation. That's not the same thing they do. They do a great job, don't get me wrong. We work very well with the City Auditor's Office, but that's not what they do. So I'm not disagreeing with you.
Right.
But that might not be the right one.
I think, again, I don't think anybody employed by the City Manager can investigate the City Manager. So I think we need to look at an outside firm at this point. That's where I am on this issue. And I have more things to say, but I kind of want to hear what everyone else has on this. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, see your lights on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur that if council believes, based on the letter that has been written, that an investigation needs to be done concerning the conduct of the City Manager, then that would, most appropriately, I believe, be done by an outside agency. Now, whether that would be, right off the top of my head here, I cannot identify who that would be. We could potentially use the services of the outside Labor Council that we have used in the past, and I would be happy to contact them. I would be happy to contact anyone else that we could think of that might be able to conduct that investigation, because that removes the investigation from people who are working under the auspices of the, of the City Manager and brings that independent, that independent eyes to it.
Okay. Done? Okay. Councilmember Stout?
Well, first of all, I agree with Councilmember Karyosha. I don't think that this was a proper time to talk about an ongoing investigation. I do also want to share that probably I had a huge difference of opinion with our City Manager over the LC EC issue years ago. But there is no perfect person. And when I think about, just a couple months ago, we extended the City Manager's contract from May to November, and he gave four pages of accomplishments that are huge. And I think that something got lost between when we did that and now, talking about investigations that are not completed, that in some respects, they're administrative, and I don't know when they should come to council, but I believe they probably should not come to council until they're completed. And so I think this discussion is premature. I will say also that I served on council for a term early 90s, and when I look at the staff that our City Manager has put together, they're outstanding. And particularly when I look back to what was, once was. I did not think I would be sitting up here listening to the derogatory comments, and I'm disappointed, because I think that this has been blown out of what it should be. I just think that we need to wait until the investigation is complete. I am still going to be supportive of this City Manager, because I think he's done overall, and as I said, nobody's perfect, but overall, I think he's done a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, and I apologize for being late. I had a meeting across the bridge that ran way too long. Couple of things, Chief. So there is nothing criminal that you've, that you have, you don't have anything criminal that you've come across at this point, correct?
Which, talking about the investigation that we're...
Regarding Finance Department investigation.
At this point, I will say no, but again, like I said, member, the auditor's still wrapping up their portion, okay? We're doing another investigation, another department. As that is wrapping up, we're still, the investigator's still gathering documentation. So we're not wasting any time, but as soon as that's done, we verify that, then we'll then remove it for on the administrative. So at this point, you're correct, there is nothing criminal. Again, as a reminder, though, that still remains confidential.
I understand. I just want to try to get a sense, because our office has been inundated with information over the break, and it's just been a lot of information. So as I... So as I look through my notes and my outline, I'm trying to kind of keep everything straight. And going back to, I believe, what the mayor was trying to communicate, as well as Madam City Attorney, we're kind of looking at two separate issues. I don't think anyone's questioning the fact that this investigation needs to be completed. I think maybe that there's two separate issues and if you look at the long range or the long term and sort of get out of the weeds and look at the big picture, you know, for me personally, one of the things that's concerning to me goes back to just, in terms of a lack of judgment, poor judgment. So part of being a leader and part of being, you look at scope, responsibility, and then performance. And part of that performance is managing staff. And what I've seen over the last month or so, since we did, to Mr. McLean's point, redo the city manager's contract and all this information came out after the fact, you know, I think we just need to kind of look at, do we want to continue? Do we have confidence, you know, in our city manager to be able to continue these next six, six or nine months or so for his contract? So I try to stay focused on that point and not this investigation. To Councilmember Cosdine's point, the information that we received recently from Ms. Bateman is a concern and should be investigated definitely by an outside source because some of those accusations, as Mr. City Manager says, are not true, really need to be investigated and done with somebody that doesn't, isn't from the inside.
And we agree with that.
Okay. And then the other thing I also thought I read, and I apologize if I'm not remembering this correctly, but I, from my notes, I wrote that our city auditor's report stated that we overpaid. So again, I go back to, it's not really criminal, so I'm not sure why we're even still investigating, but...
I can reiterate again and try to, because I want to, I want to try and make sure everybody understands this. Again, the city auditor, their responsibility was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they're looking at the numbers. They're verifying the numbers, they're doing the fact finding, okay? So that's they're looking at. What we look at is best practices, policies and procedures. How could this, did it happen? If it did, how did it, how could it be prevented? You know, was there anything else, any other involvement in the workplace? We look at all these things. That's part of an administrative investigation. It's part of what you want to do. You don't want it to happen again. You have to figure out, how did it happen? How did we get here? So again, that's, and that's, but there's a lot of records you got to put in place first. Get all our facts together before we start interviewing people. It's very important as, if you're doing another investigation. So that's the difference. You have, in this particular scenario, you have the auditor looking at the numbers. Then you look, is there anything criminal? And then you have the administrative. And when we're done with that, obviously, you'll have, you'll see everything. You'll have the full process. You'll have all the documentation that you can read for yourselves to see what you've received, what you've read, and here's the outcome.
Sure. So again, then I think our council, you know, again, we have to look at it as two separate issues. Do we have the confidence level left in our city manager to finish working his contract out? You know, that's one issue. And then the investigation is separate. And of course, the most recent allegations that we received from Ms. Bateman is a whole nother separate ball of wax. So if I try to separate all three and not conglomerate them all together, then I look at it as a separate issue. Should my council, you know, I'll wait and hear what people say. And, you know, certainly if our council decides that, you know, we recommend we wait for all the information before we make that kind of a decision, I mean, okay. But, you know, again, try to separate all the issues, if that's even possible, with the amount of information that we've received over the last six weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Gunter?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a question for the city auditor, since we haven't heard from her yet. I know that you did a internal audit and forwarded your report to us several weeks ago. Can you advise if you are continuing your investigation into that issue?
So I'm going to give you a typical auditor response. I did not do an audit. I also did not do an investigation. I did an inquiry, and it really was focused on the numbers. I did determine from that initial report that was issued, or memo, I've been referring to it as a memo, that there was, there was no money missing. We paid all of the payroll taxes that were due to be remitted. We paid them sometimes late, sometimes incorrectly, and the late filing and the inaccurate numbers, we incurred fines. So I can say that, yes, we incurred around $402,000 in penalties, but that is a constant moving number. That amount that was quoted was from the initial notices that the IRS sent to us, that those were not disseminated appropriately. And then the individuals that received them didn't necessarily say anything, kept it a secret. And again, we're, when you look at the report that was issued, and I believe it was on December 6th, we just laid out the facts. And the conclusion was that everything was paid. It wasn't correct necessarily all the time. We are looking at another timeframe where the reason why it was split up into the initial report was from April 1st of 2018 to September 30th, 2019, was because we had IRS transcripts because individuals in the finance department had already reached out to the IRS to try and start to figure out what the heck was going on. So we had that and it's, I've been told, it takes four to six weeks to get those transcripts. So we looked at that closed period. Now we're looking at, we are looking, doing another inquiry, and there will be a second report issued that goes from January 1st of 2017 up until March 31st of 2018. And then we also looked at after the report, because we requested additional transcripts, to look at September 1st, 2019 through November 7th, 2019, just so we could look at the whole picture and see if this was a systematic issue before the former payroll supervisor started and to see if it continued after she had left. So one of the things that I am bound by my CPA license, by my CFE certification, and by my internal auditor, CIA internal auditor certification, is that the second I find anything criminal, I have to talk to Chief Newlin. So I did include, and how we gauged that, was we looked at bank statements. We looked at the financial records. And the sergeant that's doing the administrative review, I rely on her to look at the policies and procedures. I do that as part of an audit, but again, I'm not doing an audit. And the reason why I didn't do an audit was because it, there's a lot more documentation that's required. It's a longer span of time, and I wanted to take a look at this and get everyone some answers. So one of the parts of my conclusion in my report was that there was no criminal, there was no money missing, everything was filed. It's not like there was two sets of books. And the reason, an important part of that was outside confirmation from the IRS. So those IRS transcripts, because they're going to tell us. And then my auditors went through and looked at what our book said, basically, and what the IRS said. And we just got through the city transcripts for that additional period of time, from 2017 up and through March 31st, 2018. And we discovered, because we received them, I believe, on the Friday before Christmas, so the 21st or 20th, whatever it was, we had, the city had only requested, because we can't request it, it has to come from finance, the deputy finance director had only requested the city transcripts. So we still need, we looked at charter school and CRA. So...
As far as your second subsequent inquiry, when do you feel that you will have that completed by?
Well, we had to, we requested the additional transcripts for the charter school and the CRA on Tuesday, on New Year's Eve. So they say four to six weeks. I also spoke to Chris Phillips prior to the meeting, and he was on the phone with the IRS today for three hours and 46 minutes, trying to talk to someone. And the good news is, is that I believe we will receive those additional transcripts a lot sooner. I saw five to 10 days. So I hope that by the end of January, that we will have that final report done. And again, it's, and we have been working in concert with the sergeant that's working on the administrative, you know, and we're actually going to issue some recommendations. So some suggestions for process improvements from, which is unusual because that usually comes from an audit. But as I did with the memo about IRMA payroll, we have some things that the city needs to address and to fix. And a lot of them, they're already doing, just in talking to Mr. Phillips. But we want to formalize it and put an end date on that and make sure that it actually happens because this is pretty serious with the IRS.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only question I had for her. So basically, what I'm hearing, sitting here, is we have several different investigations going on. It sounds like because the investigations are ongoing, that we really can't ask a lot of questions. And the problem that I have for that, if I'm going to make a good informed decision, I want all the information, and I want to be able to ask those individuals involved about whatever is in that investigation. Today, we can't do that. So I agree with Councilmember Karyosha and Councilmember Williams, that I think we've kind of acted prematurely here because we can't ask those questions. So what I would like to do is, like Councilmember Karyosha said, time's on our side. Give it another three weeks. Let the investigations from the auditor's office, the police department do their investigation. My understanding, the fire department's doing another internal investigation. Let's get these things completed. Get the information to us in the next three weeks and then sit down and be able to really talk about it and not have our hands tied when we're doing it. Additionally, as far as the accusations, and that's how I see it at this point, the accusations that Ms. Bateman had made in her letter, I totally agree that that has to be investigated. I totally agree that it has to be done by an outside agency and no one from within the city, especially because we're talking about accusations against the city manager. So I think I would be in favor of moving forward with an investigation as a result of the accusations that she made in her letter. But in the meantime, it's a sit and wait, let the investigations be completed so we can actually ask some questions. Right now, we're sitting here basically with our hands tied. That's how I feel. And I'm uncomfortable making this decision when you have my hands tied. So I just want to make sure that, let's get all the information, then I have no problem making the decision, whatever that decision's going to be. Thank you.
The reason I called the special meeting is so we could talk about a direction going forward. You know, what I see is the leadership for our city starts at the top, and he administers the city business. We, as elected officials, are accountable to the residents and the taxpayers to clean up a complex issue that needs to be resolved. I think the citizens deserve better. And I think with that, we need to get a motion on the floor to go out for a forensic audit and also to go out and do an investigative report on the certified letter received from Vicky Bateman, so this council can then move forward in a fashion that's outside of the departments within the city. So it can be an independent type of investigation. So I think that's, one of the reasons I wanted to have this special meeting was so we could come up with some of the information. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate my opportunity to share my two cents. I want to say that I do appreciate the many projects that our city manager has completed over the course of the years that he's dedicated to our city. It has made tremendous progress. And when I applied for this appointment, it was because of the cohesiveness amongst the council, who were very communicative with one another, even when you disagreed on a, on an issue, when, whether you were voting aye or nay, you were all asked different questions, and I still think that you do. And you had different perspectives. And then I believe you made good decisions, each, even though they may not have been the same decision. And so I appreciate that, my fellow council members. And one of the things I did not want to have to do as a city council person was to micromanage the city manager. John is very qualified. He does an excellent job. And I think our meeting today is not so much, as I understood, called because of the ongoing investigations, which seem excessive to me, even now as I see a little bit more about investigations that have happened in the past before October 28th, when I was appointed. They do seem excessive. But I have to be in agreement with Councilmember Nelson that today, I thought our conversation would be, is do we still have confidence in our city manager to do his job? And I hear several of my fellow council people saying that there's a lack of transparency, perhaps, in my, these are my words, there's an appearance of evil in regards to not being told something timely when a contract was in negotiation and so forth. And I would hope that we would always be truthful, transparent, trustworthy, each and every one of us, including our city manager. So I think we do have to talk about that. Do we lack confidence in our city manager to go on with his job without micromanaging? I have a concern that Vicky Bateman's letter be taken very seriously and all of her allegations examined by a external investigator, and I would be pleased to make that motion when our conversation is completed because that's important. We need to know that her allegations are true or not, because they're very serious. But I was a little concerned when Vicky Bateman was put on administrative leave, and I asked our city manager, why is she put on leave? And I was told that, well, she is in a position of authority over this other staff in that department and therefore should be put on administrative leave so no one is fearful of giving, or fearful of being subjected to, being forced to give an inaccurate answer to the investigators. So that rings in my ear, even considering our city manager. All of these folks who are currently investigating, notwithstanding the one who we will have to take care of Mrs. Bateman's allegations, work for our city manager. So as council, do we consider a three-week administrative, paid administrative leave for our city manager until the investigations are completed? Yes. And then I'm also hearing that, and I am also very concerned about the amount of money that our taxpayers shell out for investigation after investigation and investigation. And if we do eventually determine that we have no confidence in our city manager and we terminate him, or, you know, we ask without cause, you know, that he's terminated, well, then we have another three weeks of expense on his salary in addition to the 20 that's provided for in his contract. So if we think about the cost of the additional three weeks, if we don't have the conversation, if we've lost confidence today, and I'm not sensing that we do have a majority, then three weeks of paid administrative leave seems reasonable to me as we complete the investigation because the same criteria that was applied to Vicky Bateman should also be applied to Mr. Zerlag. So with that, I don't think I have any other comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
I think that council has, as you have deliberated today, I think that you have really identified the major issues that you're facing today. I'm hopeful that what I'm about to say next may help you frame those. I think that some of the confusion that has happened is because so many of the people involved in the different arenas are the same people. In other words, there is an internal investigation of a particular department. That particular department consists of certain employees. The police department is the one that's investigating them. There are conversations about the fact that, are they investigating them because everyone, as a criminal investigation? And I think what you're being told is the investigation is broader than that. It is also administrative. To the extent that you have the police department conducting an administrative investigation as well, I think that that helps to also serve, to be somewhat confusing. In other words, they're conducting an investigation that is not limited to a criminal arena. You also have the fact that you've had some serious allegations submitted to the city council by an employee. What employee? Oh, an employee of the very same department that is currently a part of the internal investigation. I think that that's, that is what's leading to this... I think that that's, that is what's leading to this kind of coalescence of these different issues. To assist you, however, I think they fall into three, I think you are faced with three different issues, three different categories of issues. And the first is, I'm going to suggest to you, all of these internal investigations that have been done, are being done, those are under the city manager. And the city manager, as the name of his position would imply, manages the city. And so what, he is the first level by which all of those, those matters are handled. And then depending on what those investigations show, the responsibility falls on him to determine what, if any, action he needs to take to ensure that the city is being well-managed, to correct any places where there's room for improvement and things of that kind. Those investigations, I think what you're hearing, are still ongoing, they are not complete yet. The reason I'm emphasizing that is because I'm about to shift to the next category, I believe, of what you're dealing with. And that is the relationship between the city council and the city manager. And that has to do with the fact that, to a great extent, you have standards that you expect the city manager to reach and to offer to you in regard to how he handles the internal investigations, the outcome, how does he manage his employees, how is he managing the departments in the city? Are they being productive? Are they being efficient? Are they being transparent? All of those things. And so, that has to do with the standard that you hold him to, very much like the first category, has to do with how does he handle the people that are under him, because the city manager is directly under the city council. So you have certain expectations that you might have as a council. In other words, if the investigation shows X, Mr. City Manager, how did you handle it? What did you know? When did you know it? And, and the next category is, when did you tell council? Now, is there one bright, fast rule for the day upon which any particular communication needs to be made to council? Well, I think that that depends on the expectations of council. That's the same thing that an underlying, an underling of the city manager may say to him, well, what did I know? When did I tell you? What is your expectation of me as to when I should report to you that I have found a problem in my, in my department? Okay? And that, that flows downward, which is why the internal investigation becomes so complex. You have certain expectations of the city manager. That's that second category. How well do you believe the city manager is managing the city? Do you have confidence that the city manager is managing the city in this, in the manner in which you would like to see it managed? And part of that, as I said, is how does he respond to council? What is your understanding of the way you are being kept abreast of, of matters affecting the city? The results of the internal, ongoing internal investigation is only a piece of that, because ultimately, whatever that shows, whatever those internal investigations show, or don't show, you are going to look to, how did the city manager handle the outcome of that? You will have an opportunity to review that, and you will either be able to say, I applaud you, Mr. City Manager, I think you handled it, you were faced with a serious situation and you evaluated it, and I, I agree with the way you handled it, or you may find yourselves in a position of saying, I disagree with the, the way you handled the, the situation that you were faced with at the conclusion of those internal investigations. The third category that you are struggling with right now is the serious allegations that have been made against the city manager. And I do think that part of the outcome today should be authorizing the city to proceed with obtaining the services of an outside agency, whether that may be an outside law enforcement agency, or otherwise, to have those investigated. And that's just, that's really a third and separate matter regarding the allegations against the city manager that came forward in that letter.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
I think that the city attorney answered my question.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you, Madam City Attorney, it's kind of what I was trying to say, that we have so many different, my, my one concern is, and I don't know if this is possible, and I'm just asking the question only because of my previous background and what I did managing large nonprofits and large departments, is there any way that our city manager would be able to interfere with an investigation? In other words, if he, if we do make the motion, which I'm happy to make that motion as well, that we definitely do an outside investigation on the allegations made against the city manager, should he be put on leave effective immediately and asked to leave today? And with, with pay, of course?
What I'm hearing you say is that the very same concerns that led to the city manager placing the employees that are under him during the time that there is an investigation of their department on administrative leave or on paid suspension are, you feel, the same issues that perhaps should lead the city council to place the city manager on leave, on suspension with pay during the time that he is investig, being investigated. And I will say to you that the city manager's contract does allude to this, it has, the city manager's contract does have a provision for this, and it does state that when deemed necessary or appropriate by the city council, the employee may be suspended from his duties with pay until the matters that gave rise to the suspension are resolved to the satisfaction of the council. Employee hereby waives any rights under the city charter pertaining to such suspension. So if the city council believes that you are at a point now where you want the city manager to be placed on suspension, then I believe that you are able to do that with pay.
I would be happy to make that motion pending an investigation immediately, Mayor. If that's appropriate, or if we still want to discuss it, that's fine, too. I just want to be fair and consistent.
Want to phrase your motion, that we do an outside?
Outside investigation on the city manager based on the recent allegations, yes.
And the fact that he goes on leave?
And the fact that he should go on leave immediately if we're being fair and consistent with what we've done with others.
While we're doing the investigation.
While we're doing the investigation.
Mayor, can I say real quick on that, on the?
Let me just see if I can get a second on the motion first. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Cosden seconds the motion. Okay, go ahead, Chief.
I just want to iterate, on the, on the letter, we're talking about outsourcing to another firm or organization to the investigation, there is a part of that that has to be looked at first, which is, is there anything criminal made in that letter that we're talking about? There could be, so that's an important thing to consider. We have to find, I'm not saying that we do it, but I am saying the law enforcement agencies should look at that criminal first before.
I don't see, I don't see any reason why you can't continue your investigation while we have an outside.
No, I'm talking about the, the letter that you're talking about, the other allegations that were made on that letter that you received by Vicky Bateman, that's what I'm talking about. So, you want to outsource that to the organization, look at the administrative part of it, what I'm saying is, there may be a criminal piece first you want to look at before you do that, that's all I'm trying to recommend.
You have no, I have no problem with the police continuing the investigation, looking for criminal activity, I have no problem with that. I don't see why we can't have a second outside investigation running concurrently with that, because certainly if we put the gentleman out on leave, we're going to want to try to get him back if the investigation comes back.
I'm not disagreeing with the outside firm, what I'm trying to say is before an outside firm can work the administrative portion, you want to look, have a look at criminally first. You don't want to do both at the same time, you can't do that. So you want to look at the criminal portion first, that's all I'm recommending. And also, keep in mind, there is still another ongoing investigation by FDLE that's criminal right now as well. So that's ongoing as well, too. I have to see who can, who can look at that part of it.
Now, all I have to say, if we had strong leadership in city manager's department, would we be having these multiple investigations? Would they be continuing? That's all I have to say at that point. So we have a motion, we have a second. Councilmember Stout?
Yes, we do have a he said, she said situation. I'm not sure it cannot be investigated while the employees are at their office on duty rather than spending all the dollars we're spending with putting individuals on paid leave. It just doesn't make sense to me that we continue in this kind of a direction. When I heard forensic audit, I recently heard that, because I'm liaison to the auditor's office, I recently heard that a forensic audit is terribly expensive. And consequently, I would not be in favor of doing, doing this. Is this, is this not what I heard, Andrea?
Andrea Russell, city auditor, for the record. It, it can get expensive, I don't think there's any need for it. We're looking, I've participated in forensic audits before, not for the city, for, in my previous jobs, when I worked for the state of Rhode Island. And it, it's not something that's needed, and that's, again, something that if I get to a level that I'm like, I can't follow this, I need help, I, I'm bound by the standards that I have to abide by for my licenses, my certifications, to say, hey, we need some help. So I, and we had discussed this, Chief Newlin and John and I and Connie had discussed this weeks ago, that, and any audits that are, are ordered have to go through my office. So we've had this conversation, I don't think there's any need for a forensic audit, even, we're in good shape as far as the, the second report that I'm going to issue, we're just, like I said, waiting for the IRS transcripts. I don't see any need, again, at this time, for that. There's, there's not two sets of books, that's, you know, something that if someone's trying to hide something, there was, the only person that, that hid stuff was the payroll supervisor that didn't relay, that she filed late, that she received notices, that she was even corresponding with the IRS. So that's in that, that's in the report that started to be issued, I'm not compromising any investigations, administrative or criminal, but I definitely don't think that there's a need for forensic audit. And yes, they are super expensive. And you might be thinking of, too, when the Budget Review Committee had suggested that we do a citywide performance audit, and that's when I spoke with our, our external auditors, Clifton, Larson, Allen, and they said it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars and hours, too, that would tie up. Not that that would preclude a forensic audit, because that's, that takes a lot, but, you know, you, you have my staff, you have me and my staff, so why, and again, we don't, we work for audit committee and council, I don't work for the city manager, so.
Is it necessary to do a forensic audit if all we're going to be really looking at is the allegations sent on the certified letter from the finance director, Vicky Bateman? We wouldn't need a forensic audit. We would just need an investigation into those allegations.
Right, I don't think you'd need, well, unless there was anything, if there's any financial, because again, the sergeant that's doing the administrative review is looking at the policies and procedures, because that's what she has her expertise in. We're looking at the, the numbers, because that's what we have our expertise, we also have expertise in looking at policies and procedures, which, again, if we didn't audit, and we did touch on and have some recommendations for payroll in the overtime audit that we issued a couple of months ago. So, you know, we were looking at that, but in that context, we were looking at overtime, we weren't looking at IRS filings. And we also have an external audit done, the CAFR, that Clifton, Larson, Allen does look at payroll, but they're looking at, you know, we paid John Smith this amount, he was a valid employee and, and he got the rate, pay rate and whatnot. So I don't think there's any need, even, I haven't seen this, this other letter, but if there's anything in it, you know, I rely on the fact that those that have seen it, if there's anything financial in it, that you could share with me and I could decide if we needed to do an audit, so.
You done? Did you, did you have your light on, Madam City Attorney?
I do.
I got council members that want to talk.
I, I'm following up on what Chief Newlin said a moment ago, because, I'm following up on what Chief Newlin said a moment ago, because I think the auditor is indicating that she has not seen the most recent letter. And it's the letter that I think is falling into that third category, which is allegations that have been made against the city manager and against at least one other employee in the city. And I think that those allegations have to do with mismanagement and possibly misrepresenting some things regarding the city, and I think also possibly receiving some kind of personal benefit by the result of certain recommendations or decisions that were made. That's why I'm, I'm very sensitive and sympathetic, empathetic to the issues that, I think this is what Chief Newlin was trying to allude to, that some of that investigation may need to take place by a law enforcement agency if there's anything potentially criminal in there, and there very well may be, because there are certainly statutes that govern the conduct of, of public employees and their ability to accept any kind of personal benefit as a result of decisions that are being made. I am assuming, and maybe I should not be assuming this, and that's why I, my light was on, and that is, when the council is indicating that you want to see an outside investigation done by, regarding the, those allegations, that that may not just be an outside firm or something of that kind to look at the administrative part of it, but also that we might want to see if we could retain the services, retain being a, a large word, of an outside law enforcement agency who might be able to supplement the police department in light of the fact that this involves an internal investigation. Chief Newlin, might such an, an agency be amenable to conducting that kind of an investigation?
Talking about like the sheriff's department?
Or the FDLE, or something of that kind? That's why I'm posing this to the city, uh, police chief.
Dave Newlin, police chief, mayor and council, yes, that's correct, that's what I was, I was trying to refer to. I'd have to, if it's okay, I can, I can check into that and let you know. It could be FDLE, but again, I have to run it by them, or it could be another agency, obviously one of our neighboring agencies as well. But I have to check with them and make sure they're okay with that, and it meets their qualifications.
Okay. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, on the proposal that Councilmember Nelson put forth about putting the city manager on paid leave, I'd love to see him have a vacation, but I don't agree with it, I'm sorry. I have no reason to believe that he in any way would interfere with any investigation. He has never given us any reason not to trust him, and I think that this, it's an expense that I don't think we need to bear. I do have a question on these investigations. How many people are doing an investigation? Okay. We know what the chief is doing.
Great.
Chief Ryan, what, Chief Lamb, I don't know what you guys are investigating.
Ryan Lamb, police chief, or fire chief. He's, he's police chief. So right now, there's one investigation that's been completed, and that's, I believe, council had been provided a copy of. I'm currently in the middle of one investigation, we're putting together the final report, hope to have that finished up next week in regards to a, a conduct issue.
Okay, so that's administrative, criminal?
Just clarification, FDLE is not, is also doing an investigation, criminal as well, they're not here, but they're doing the investigation.
Okay. Everybody's investigating something different, which I guess is good, because if you all come up with the same recommendation, then that pretty much checks and balances, but we need somebody to oversee this whole thing, like a master investigator. If we want to put an investig, a main investigation on the city manager's office, then that's probably something we need to do up here, is bring aboard an investigator. You know, we have a city auditor that's working for us, which he's a numbers person. I don't know, the city attorney office, got anybody they could help us with this, on this? And also, HR, don't they have people in there that do admin investigations?
Well, that's, that's one of the questions, Councilmember Williams, that I had, is why if we're doing an administrative investigation, aren't we doing it with HR?
You know, if we can keep it in-house, that's fine, but otherwise, we're going to have to go out and get somebody to do it and then work with the rest of these people that are, that are investigating to come up with some sort of an answer.
If I may, the, the investigations are, again, remember they're separate, so I know you mentioned about some of these maybe oversee all of them, but I would just respectfully disagree, because they're all separate investigations.
Well, that's true.
What we're doing doesn't go into what the fire chief's doing. What FDLE is doing doesn't go into what we're doing or the fire, so I mean, they're all separate, so it, it's just, yes, there are separate investigations, but they wouldn't be, were an issue if you had to have somebody oversee that.
I, I didn't mean to, you know, manage the investigations, I meant when they're done, to consolidate them and find out, you know.
Well, we, we, what we do is we don't consolidate, but when, obviously, when the, when the, we have, our findings are done, and it's completed, you would have, you would have that to look at for the outcome, from, from us or the fire. I can't speak for FDLE, but again, our best investigation, you would have that when it's completed.
All right, that's all I had, Mayor, I just.
Councilmember Karyosha?
I am not for putting the city manager out on paid leave. We've done enough of that already. However, let's look at what we have and why we want to put him out on leave. The serious allegations are so serious, that the person that made the allegations didn't come forward at the time they allegedly happened, they happened, it came forward after the director was in fact put on paid leave and her department was being investigated from top to bottom. So no, I'm not going to be putting out our city manager on leave with pay or otherwise. It's, it's just, you know, these allegations like this are not unusual. Yes, they should be investigated, they are very, very serious. We have to look at the big picture here. When did the allegations occur? When, when did the incidents occur? And when was the allegation made? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. Chief Newlin, I have a question for you. You, you mentioned the criminal investigation should take place. You mentioned the criminal investigation should take place before an administrative investigation. Why can't they be concurrent?
Because if I can tell you to give a statement, it can't be used in a criminal proceeding. So if I do an administrative investigation, I sit down with you, I say, I want you to tell me what happened, and we find out later on, and now it becomes criminal, I cannot use that statement against you.
Okay, that's a good answer. Thank you very much.
It's protecting the employee's rights, protecting the subject employee's rights, the witnesses' rights, and that's what we're trying to do. So there is a process, and that's why I say that.
So we're talking about leave that would extend a long time, if it were to go for the duration of the investigation, right? We're talking a criminal investigation and then an administrative investigation? We're talking weeks to months?
For the...
For the, to investigate the claims in the Vicky Bateman letter?
Yes. It very well could be. I hate to give a timeline, because I don't want to be held to that, because I still don't know what we're going to uncover, so it's hard to say, but yes, this will, this would take time.
Okay, thank you. I'm torn on that, because I think that we should be consistent, fair, predictable, and as a city, we put employees on leave when they're being investigated. That's, from what I understand, that's what we do. We have three right now on leave in the Financial Department, because of the thing that we're not going to talk about, but I just feel like it's inconsistent and unfair to say we're not going to put the City Manager out on leave because of the cost, yet we'll do it for other city employees. What message does that send to other employees who are being investigated?
Exactly.
That's how I feel. So I am torn, I understand, we're talking weeks and months without a City Manager and a paid vacation essentially, so I just need, I need to hear more from my peers up here.
Maximum time, I think, is 45 days. Madam City Attorney?
The 45 days to which you refer, Mr. Mayor, is in the Charter regarding the whole for cause process, and in his contract, he has waived the Charter provisions regarding suspension. I think that if you were going to have an investigation done that you believe is touching too closely on the City Manager or his conduct, then you have the ability to place him on leave with pay during the time of the investigation. Whether or not right now, as we sit here, is the time to place him on leave is a question that only the council can answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to withdraw my second on the open motion that we have, and suggest that we divide those two things into two separate motions. So I withdraw my second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
I was the second.
Your Honor, I had Councilmember Cosden as the second.
Okay.
Oh, okay, very good.
But I like your idea, and I'll also withdraw my second, and let's start that motion over again. Thank you.
So we're looking for the first motion to be an independent investigation into the allegations of the certified letter?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. More discussion on that? Councilmember Nelson?
Well, mine is more about being fair and consistent with the position of the City Manager. Ms. Sinogo, could I ask you a question? Would you mind? I want to talk to you a little bit about retaliation in terms of perception and reality of retaliation, and if any of this, in your professional opinion, is viewed as retaliation, whether it's, as Councilmember Karyosha mentioned, the timing of the allegations made by Ms. Bateman, I mean, obviously, yes, there are disgruntled employees out there that do make up false claims, and so my concern is, is that I think in something I read that came to us, Ms. Bateman stated that she had spoken to the City Manager several times, and in fact, in one of the transcripts that Assistant City Manager, Ms. Barron, made, I read something about where she, where Ms. Bateman had stated, in other words, I think that our team knew about this. I mean, my concern is, is that if our City Manager and our Assistant City Manager knew about this, and some of these allegations made in this letter, that could Ms. Bateman being placed on administrative leave be viewed in retaliation for her coming forward to our team previously? Does that make sense?
Sure. Lisa Sinogo, Human Resources Director. You know, when you're looking at a retaliation claim, that's also a claim, and so that needs to be looked into. So to have three or four sentences of information, you really can't state, oh yes, that would indicate retaliation. There are things that happen in daily business, et cetera, we all don't get along sometimes, those kinds of things, so you really can't just look at something in a nutshell and say, okay, there's a retaliation piece, so, you know, we have quite a few professionals on staff, et cetera, that I think that looked through this, so you have to rely on that professional opinion as to placing someone on an admin leave. So I'm really not in a position to question that at this point in time.
Okay. I mean, I guess my concern, again, goes back to if we don't place our City Manager, I mean, I'm not excited about, I'm not thrilled about placing this, placing Mr. Zurlag on leave. We have a big ship here that we're trying to move, and who's going to take, who's going to take the wheel? I mean, that's where my mind goes. However, if I look at everything that's been sent to us, I go back to, you know, yes, it's a he said, she said, but if we're going to put one person out on leave, and it's, since I've been elected, I think there was one position that went out on leave right away after our election, and, you know, that person was put out on leave, and Vicky Bateman was put out on leave, and it was my understanding, when I asked Mr. Zurlag what constitutes putting an employee out on leave, and his words to me were exactly that, you know, they're managing a department, they're head of a department, we don't want them to have any influence. So my concern is, is if you apply that same standard to his position, wouldn't there be that same potential of influence in terms of the investigation? I mean, I just want to be fair and consistent, I'm exhausted by lawsuits. These are both stellar employees, in my opinion, that we now, you know, we now have this situation, and it's very disappointing, sad, it really is, it's very unfortunate, but now we're in this situation, and I just, I just think we need to be fair and consistent, just my opinion.
If I can assist in any way, each situation is done on a case-by-case, otherwise, it'd be done fast, right? So everything is a case-by-case. So in the current situation of individuals being on admin leave, you know, you have to look at the professional aspect, it wasn't just made by one person, is my understanding, there were multiple individuals looking into that, so, you know, we need to rely on the investigators and the individuals who are a part of that, and in any investigation, that's what we always look at, is those, we are empowering those individuals who are looking at a situation to make some of those decisions, and that was the decision made for that case. It does, in my eyes, does not have to be the same for every single case. We don't have a written policy on that aspect of, you know, that's what has to happen. So I do believe there are some options that are available to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
As I understand it, the motion that's on the floor right now is the one about having the outside investigation.
Correct.
And I am, it is my understanding that that investigation includes, but is not limited to, both criminal and also administrative. Well, I mean, bringing in a law enforcement agency who is able to determine the whole personal, well, we don't need to rehash the allegations, but their involvement as well. I am wondering, in light of the, because the question that Councilmember Nelson just raised is, I think, going to be related to the second, after you decide whether or not you're bringing in the outside agency, then the question I think you're talking about is, at this point, do we want to go ahead and suspend the City Manager? I am wondering whether there may be almost like a compromised position in there. In other words, if we can identify the agency to do the investigation, and I don't so much mean the administrative, I more mean the criminal, I wonder if they might be able to make a recommendation concerning whether or not they believe any and all employees, or which employees that are the subject of the investigation should be placed on suspension immediately with pay, or whether that's not something that they see as necessary or even advantageous in this particular case, and if we could get that from them, the council does have a meeting on Monday, and only in two days, so that is another option for you. I'm not trying to sway you in terms of what decision you want to make today, I'm just saying that you may have more than one option available to you.
Most of this stuff in the certified letter, to me, is administrative. There's one small sentence that could be considered potentially criminal. So I think the majority of the investigation that's going to be done will be administrative into the office of the City Manager. I'm going to go to Councilmember Gunter, and then I'm going to look to go to a vote. Councilmember Gunter?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions for the City Manager. In your tenure here, can you tell us how many times that there was either administrative or a criminal investigation where you had to put an employee out on paid administrative leave?
My recollection is that I put two people on administrative leave in the eight years that I've been here. I want to just, if I may, confer with Connie or Chief Dave, knows it's been...
We've got three out now.
Yeah, you have the ones that are out now, and then I can think of two other people, I think.
Yeah, I don't know where you come up with two.
I'm sorry.
We've got three out now, and we had one out last year.
Not counting, not counting.
What's there now?
Who's here there now, so five.
So a total of five?
That's my recollection, I think, is five. I had Mike, and I had Mike and the company, we had the three now.
Assistant City Manager?
I'm sorry, I think there's four.
Four?
Four that I've had, and that's my recollection, sir.
And could you explain the criteria of your decision in those instances?
I'm sorry, it was five.
Okay. Could you explain the methodology that you applied in those cases, and why you made the decision, without getting into specifics? I'm more concerned with the reasoning behind it, not necessarily the specifics of the case.
Yes, sir. I tend, as my management style, to flatten out the organization, and delegate especially matters of investigations to someone else. And that's a good practice when you're a manager, because in addition to be the appointing authority, I'm also the disappointing authority, and so if someone gets fired, sometimes it's not brought to my attention unless there's, unless that person that's been fired appeals to me to become unfired, and so with the investigations that lead up to that matter, with the number of employees that we have, I don't conduct investigations myself, nor do I interfere with them. And what we do, and I'll now take this to the instant case at hand, when the issue was first brought to my attention, it was, well, we have an employee that missed some payments to the IRS, there's been some penalties, we're working on it to get the money back, and then it became a developing issue. Mr. Karyosha was involved with talking to someone when it was still developing. During that timeframe, I learned more what was going on through documentation, not a one-letter certified mail allegation, but documentation of monies that were not paid or paid out of improper fund, or our gas tax being taken, taken out from the IRS, and I did not know of these things. And so when an issue like that comes to my attention, I call a group of people that know more than I do about these things, to see if that person should be placed on leave, and it goes beyond any matter of having an influence. In the instant case, I brought in Connie Barron, Dolores Menendez, our City Auditor, Chief Newland, outside counsel, Bob Sherman. Was there anyone else?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Our City Attorney, and I think a forensic auditor. They all agreed that Ms. Bateman should be placed on administrative leave. So it was based on more than a letter that you received with allegations, which I know are baseless, but that's beside the point. I welcome an investigation in that respect, because I'm here primarily not to save a job or save myself from not, from going on paid leave, I'm here to maintain my reputation, which is and has been stellar, and when I leave this organization, I have other things I want to do besides going fishing and playing golf, and I don't want my reputation damaged in that way, and I'm going to assure that does not happen. It's not a threat, I'm just going to assure that does not happen. So you can do what you like, as a government body, sir, but that's, that's the methodology I use. As Lisa Sinogo said, it's a case-by-case basis, but I do it on a preponderance of evidence, and not a letter with allegations that were mailed to you.
And as far as the outside independent investigation, I'm hoping that the chief would be able to give us some answers by Monday on that. As far as our choices, see if even FDLE would take a look at that.
You're referring to the criminal portion? If they look at the crim, yeah, I'll make phone calls, just like you had here, see if they could, will look at that as well. I will try to get that to you as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thanks.
I just want to make a comment on one of your comments, Mr. City Manager. $381,000 was withheld from the gas tax, $402,000 was held, was penalties and fines paid. For you to stand up there and say you didn't know about it, to me, is a problem. That's a problem. You should have your finger on the pulse of all these things financially that take place in our city, and sometimes I know I have questions and you don't know. It's another situation where you're saying you didn't know about these things, when I see certain documentation that tells me that you did. And you didn't share it with us, you weren't transparent with us.
I disagree with all of your statements.
Thank you.
I'm not responsible for every item that goes on in the city with almost 2,000 employees and a $900 million budget. I've got department directors that are responsible, they are responsible for what goes on in their departments. If under their tutelage...
I've got an audit report here that tells me on the 24th of October, you were notified that there were issues with these things, and you were told, we didn't find out about it until November 18th, the same day that we were going to talk. Now, I'm not questioning to talk about the extended contract that you asked for, so we found out about it weeks later, and all I'm saying is there was a lack of transparency. You may not have known the amounts, you may not have known the dollar values that were there, but you knew that, from what I can see in the documentation, that there were issues going back to November of 18 with not paying the payroll taxes. That could add up to be a lot of money. I think you owed it to this council to let them know to be more transparent when things like that come about.
When things were brought to my attention that had a certain gravitas involved, I brought them to Mayor and Counsel. His attention.
Councilmember Stott?
In reference to employees that are paid on, that are placed on administrative leave, I understand when the three from the Finance Department were put on leave, that it was a unanimous yes to put them on paid administrative leave by about five or six people.
Yes, ma'am.
And when I looked at the individuals that voted to put them on leave, it was an impressive group of people. So consequently, I understand why that was done. I would like for the investigation to be over soon.
So would I.
Because of the fact that they need to come back to work. We now know, I believe, very, that it was not criminal, that it was a mistake, an employee that didn't know or made mistakes. Also, when I read all of the verbatim information that was sent to us, which took hours, because there were a lot of pages, a lot of time spent to put all of these conversations into a verbatim, so that we could read them, I was then impressed with our City Attorney's conclusion that when our Finance Director said that it was illegal to do such and such, that it wasn't, that our City Attorney didn't agree with that. She made a mistake. It's possible she made a mistake on other allegations that she made. So consequently, I'm not, I'm not in favor of our City Manager being placed on any type of leave. I'm not sure that I agree with an investigation. I'm not there. I think possibly the vote will be to have the investigation, but I'm just not sure that I believe it's necessary. I believe that mistakes were made, yes, and maybe individuals need to be talked with, and if it had not been that I read all of the verbatims, I would have been more impressed by what was written in that certified letter. But after reading what Dolores wrote, I had real questions in my mind about a lot of the statements that were made. So anyway, I'm not sure that I'm going to vote even for the investigation. I know I won't vote for the leave.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. I have comments about leave, but I'm going to reserve them for that conversation. Right now, I think we should go ahead and take the vote on the investigation. Right now, I think we should go ahead and take the vote on the investigation.
So, we have a motion on an external investigation. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Karyosha?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Coviello?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
No.
Welsh?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Okay. The next motion was whether or not somebody want to make a motion that we put, while we do that investigation, the city manager out on leave with pay.
So moved.
Do I have a second on that? I'm going to hand over the gavel for the mayor pro temp, and I'll second that motion. Now, we can talk about it.
So, may I have the floor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think it was the city attorney that mentioned the investigator, either the criminal investigator or the administrative investigator, advising us on whether Mr. City Manager should be placed on leave. And I think that is a good idea, asking the investigator. Because if the object is not discipline, if the object is to make sure the investigation is impartial, then I would trust the investigator to tell us what their expert opinion is.
What they would do? So, you want to hold till we...
So, I would like to wait on that. I think that would be the best thing to do.
Madam City Attorney, do you have somebody in mind that would be able to conduct this investigation under a law firm?
Well, the criminal one is, I believe I'll be happy to confer with the police chief, but I think he's indicating that he will be in touch with at least one outside entity to see if they could perform that. And they may have a recommendation...
I don't think there's any criminal activity here. I'm more interested in the administrative investigation as to the things that took place administratively with the allegations.
Well, I'm just separating those things out for you. I will be happy, as I indicated earlier, I will be happy to reach out to, at the very least, the law firm, Constangy Brooks, that does our outside labor. They're a firm that's based in, they're a multi-state firm, but they are primarily, the people we deal with are mostly based in Jacksonville. Whether they will feel comfortable doing this investigation in light of their, their role with the city, I do not know. But I, if they do not, I will extend my search further for who might be, might be an appropriate entity to perform the administrative part of it.
Okay. And at that time, would they be able to make a recommendation to the council as to whether or not there should be a leave or not? And whether they can conduct the investigation with the city manager in place? Or would their recommendation be to put him out on leave for short term?
I will, anyone I contact regarding this, I will definitely ask them their, their feelings about whether or not, based on the allegations that they're seeing and what you keep referring to as the certified letter, whether they believe that, based on those allegations, it would be advantageous to put one or more employees out on suspension with pay. Remember, too, that when, I just want council to be aware of this, that when we retain the services, I don't know about an outside law enforcement agency, but when you retain the services of an outside entity to perform an administrative investigation, there are going to be charges that the city is going to incur in regard to that work being performed. And so, if it, certainly if it is with an entity that is not, does not have a current relationship with the city, there would need to be a relationship with that, an engagement of that entity as well.
The law firm, John Agnew Firm, as an HR-type attorney?
I haven't, but I would be happy to, to contact the firm that, with which we already have dealings, and I will be happy to contact others as well.
Okay. So, would you be able to bring that information back to us on Monday's meeting?
I will do my best to do that, Mr. Mayor, yes. If that is the council's decision, I will do my best to bring that information to you.
So, with that, I'm going to ask the motion maker to maybe withdraw the motion?
Withdraw? Yeah, that sounds good.
Do I have a second withdrawn? That's me. I withdrew the second. Okay. Okay. So, we'll bring that, and we'll get that on the agenda for Monday night, and hopefully, you'll have some more information. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. There's another issue that we have to look at here pretty quick. Had we decided to do something today as far as parting ways with the city manager, we could have been in a fix, because we don't have anybody on deck.
I will tell you that that's not 100% true.
Well, what we need to do also, we know that the city manager is planning to retire in November. We need to get a search firm identified and working to start recruiting, or at least advertising for...
I'd be all for doing that immediately.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I'm bringing it up now.
Bring it up now?
If we're going to be voting Monday on a consultant or some firm to do investigating, maybe we can just tie that onto that and have, have us talk and vote about both of them.
We could do that now, too. Correct?
Yeah, we can.
Somebody want to make a motion that we entertain a national search firm?
Yes, I will.
On a new city manager, starting immediately?
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Let's get a second. Any discussion about that? I think it's a great idea that we start. That search could take a long time. Have a motion on the floor in a second to engage a national search firm for the search for a new city manager. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Karyosha?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Coviello?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Stout?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Mayor, can I bring up one more thing for clarification?
Sure.
To understand the process. What the city attorney alluded to, that we're looking for a firm to do the administrative investigation. We're also looking for a law enforcement agency to do the criminal portion first as well. So, again, just want to make sure, clarifications. I will look to have, hopefully have an answer for you by Monday. I will try to see if they will do that. But again, just so, one more clarification, there are two separate investigations.
Is it safe to say you have two places to go, FDLE and the sheriff's department?
Maybe, I can check with the other agencies as well, but I would say those are the two main ones, yes. Actually, I'll reach at them as soon as possible, but I'll try to have an answer for you on that portion as well Monday. So...
Thank you. Councilmember Gunter?
Yeah, as far as police agencies to do the investigation, I would personally feel more comfortable if it's someone without, outside the county.
Okay. I will check into that and see what we can do. It might take, I might not have the answer for you Monday, just, I will work on that and see if I can come up with. Thank you.
I go with that, absolutely. Okay. Okay, time and place of future meetings, a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Monday, January 6, 2020, at 4:30 PM in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.